Meeting committee of the whole to order. You please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Get a motion to adopt the agenda, please.
Move.
Second motion made by Mr. B. Saw second by Mr. Dorsey. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Right, number two on the agenda, discuss contribution to library construction project with action. We'll start out with the short video.
Know how much that costs. That's a big payday for twenty years. It's gonna be fifty thousand dollars. It doesn't work like that. If like Jerry signed, he's still ready to return that library book you borrowed in nineteen seventy one. Prepare to be surprised by what you find when you do. With Connor Knight, time to check out the libraries twenty twenty two.
On recent funding, the citizens of Conal County, especially here, can you check out this check? A life of an old institution.
These are no longer warehouses of books. These are marketplaces of ideas, this is a community's living room.
After one to two years and thirty two million dollars in renovations, downtown Charleston's public library reopened to the public. Inside, this has discovered a brand new cafe, a team lending library, an ideal level full of the latest technology. It was an excitement we could see and hear. Is exactly what the librarians were looking for.
Librarians from time immemorial.
Are we beyond the age of.
We're beyond the age of that, yeah.
Erica Connolly is the director of the Conal County Library. From podcasting booths to computerized sewing machines to augmented reality screens, the facility has been updated for the modern age.
I tell you what I'm not seeing here, I'm not seeing a lot of books.
Yeah, no, we have three D machines, we have robotics, we have three D pens.
Modern art, still plenty of books, the redesign allowed the staff to rethink how they were displaying.
It was more about the engagement, how we wanted our public to engage within the library. It wasn't at shelves, it wasn't describing a book and then leaving, we wanted it to stay.
Across the country, library attendance has declined at twenty one percent two thousand nine to twenty nineteen. The borrowing has actually increased, it's just moved online, its collections have shifted from physical to visual material. That's caused libraries to shift their thinking in terms of what might bring people through the doors.
Good morning, welcome, good morning, welcome.
Austin Public Library Director Roosevelt Weeks begins each day greeting patrons as they enter the downtown mansion.
Hey, what's up?
Two hundred thousand square foot building, still some fat. We meet there with roll, nine minutes to this point, and it's bustling already, it's totally flooded. People come to Austin's library to play board games. Video games, games of giant chess. Alongside the action books, there are chrome books and mac books to check out. Seating area holds jam sessions featuring the library's collection of retards. We get the most unexpected physical item that you can check out at the library. Seats, seats.
Yes, if you don't have a library, we have seats you can check out.
So that's not something you have to return, right? It's a late fee.
The security comes through once you've got your book.
When Austin Central Library opened in twenty seventeen, it instantly became a community hub. Visitation increased in subsequent years. Were you here on a rainy day?
Oh gosh, I was here, it was one of the most glorious days of my life. And we had seventy thousand people waiting to get into this building.
The building itself was part of the draw, bright open, both spaces abound, meet. Modern libraries are simply the meat that needs today, Austin's been flexible for the future.
More and more of these libraries are being built so that they have very open floor parents. And I think part of that is that vision of long term, you don't want to know what the next thing might be.
It helps to grow up, it adds a sense of future for libraries.
It's really easy to think about the future as exclusively technological, and I think a lot of libraries are being faced with that. At the same time, I think we're starting to see that there's a really great future for these institutions as place. The value of having an open public place in your city and your neighborhood.
In two thousand nine, the city of San Francisco became the first in the country to hire a full-time social worker for its main library. Dozens of cities across the country have followed suit.
A lot of the social safety nets have been underhanded or removed. And unfortunately, that often means that there's a crunch on other public institutions. Like public libraries, they are very trusted institutions and people feel welcome within them.
People like Andrew Constantino, who for a time was a daily visitor to the downtown Seattle library.
The library is like your grandmother's house. If you're homeless or living in poverty, that's exactly what it's like. When you are allowed to be at the library, whereas you know, if you're homeless, you're not allowed to be many places.
Years ago, Constantino was living on the Seattle streets and its shelters. The library since around, a place to get out of the rain, get back on a seat. You mentioned the quotes of feeling like welcome here, what was it like to not feel welcome elsewhere?
Oh, it sucks, you know, it's like everywhere in our society, you have to buy access. You know, if I want to use your bathroom, I have to buy a soda bar.
Public libraries are public, a place where everyone can come together. In one room, recent immigrants practice English. In another. First-line computer users learn how to navigate the internet. The internet had been always on a minuteless hub of information. Didn't replace libraries, it may have made them more essential.
The side effects of some of the technologies where we do become so focused in on online information or online discourse that we forget how to communicate with other people. Libraries do train you, I think, to be a member of a public, to be part of a civic discourse.
Once COVID made those connections challenging, most libraries closed during the height of the pandemic. There's been a recent slew of grand openings. Newly renovated libraries that pop up everywhere from Flat Michigan to Fayetteville, Arkansas. From Spokane, Washington, to Washington, D.C.
I really think that far from any idea that some people might have that the library is somehow obsolescent, you know, or irrelevant. It's actually the opposite, I think that our society gets old, needs more institutions and public areas that are like the library. Much more a model for how we should treat other people than just as part of the past.
Buy more, save more during the four day super labor day.
Thank you, thank you for that video. Like, move on to introduce Devin from Keller.
Good evening.
Would you like to stand next to this microphone here, just so we capture.
What do you want me to cover first? Should we go through the plans and then?
Yeah.
So, for those not very familiar, I'll just kind of give a quick summary. Libraries, two-story, so more or less what we'd be planning to do is everything that was planned for the annex across the street would be going on the second floor. So everything that was originally incorporated within the fab lab and the industrial area, all the technology, everything would still be within the library, it would be on the second floor. And now you're taking all the stacks, all the books, everything that the current library has, and then essentially having it on the first floor. I don't know how in-depth or in detail we want to get other than that.
Do you want on the, that's the second floor?
Yeah, I think that's good.
Okay.
Just a brief discussion.
Are there any thoughts or questions? Everything that was, everything that's in the library now, everything that was planned across the street does fit within this building. I think we're maybe one or two thousand square feet extra within this building, but there really wasn't a whole lot of extra space. So with that extra space, I think we had like one or two additional seating areas. So there is obviously some growth for the future, but I mean, to have everything in one building is just a phenomenal setup the way it is.
Does anybody else have any questions on the functionality of the building?
I just wanna, and I, I just want to point out after the meeting, there are more detailed plans here that you can look at.
All right, well, if nobody has any questions for Devin, well, we can move right along to the library with your presentation. Thank you, Devin.
So I think you guys received the budget, right? Did everyone see a budget?
Coming across right now.
Us right now, because this is one of the things you guys requested of us is we are making a request for the five hundred thousand remaining of the seven fifty. You guys have given us the two fifty, and that's in our trust right now, and we thank you so much for that. Now, you wanted to have actual reasons why we would need the, another five hundred, so that's what the budget here is really quite involved and really. Pass it on to I have that, keep on going. I think it would be good to just, for you to review it a little bit, and if there's any questions for Devin about it, then now is the time to do some, some questioning.
I would invite Devin to kind of, just kind of go through it generally, so people kind of have an opportunity to kind of absorb it and ask questions.
If there is something glaring, feel free to interrupt. We'll start with page one, so it just gives a little summary, probably what I just explained. So I'm going to give a brief summary of just the overall view of some of these, or all the divisions. So demolition, we tried our best to keep interior walls, obviously all load-bearing walls we were keeping, we don't want to be tearing everything apart. But all the interior demo does need to get demoed. There is some concrete demolition when we're looking at the new stairs, so we're cutting through that precast. Concrete itself, those stairs that are in the center of the building that we're putting a new set in are being driven by ADA compliance. So the two sets of stairways are not ADA compliant. So we've got two options, we can either try our best to tear those apart and fix them, or we can add a set of stairs in the library that creates a pathway from one store to the next, because right now you, I don't want to say you have to walk outside the building, but you have to walk through the vestibule to the stairwell. Even with the elevator, the stairs do need to be ADA, that was my question I had right away to the architect. Building foundations for those stairs, so looking at the steel underneath the first floor, we'd be looking at some additional footings, foundations. Obviously, some flatwork that would be needed, masonry. We are cutting some large windows into what is now the vault area for the children's area in the future. With that masonry work in order to have the windows, structural steel, this is being driven by the stairs for the most part. I think we'll have some miscellaneous reinforcing as needed if we need to adjust a few things. Carpentry, so this is all of our, I think we have stud, steel studs and a different one, I believe, oh no, they're in there. So we've got rough framing, which is not a whole lot, all the interior doors and side lights, so we got wood doors, we got hollow metal frames, side lights, and we've got a ton of doors. Steel studs blocking rails for the stairs, so again, that's that open concept that the rails, it'd be not necessarily just like a handrail to the entire assembly. Grab bars, restroom accessories, building insulation. When we build out interior of buildings, it is beneficial or needed for the most part to have insulation in those walls for sound control. Otherwise, you have, especially in a library, it's going to feel like all the walls are paper thin. Libraries are generally quiet, but there can be kids in there once in a while. So drywall, obviously everything would be drywalled. We've got acoustic ceiling tiles, based on what is in there now, it's really tough seeing the feasibility of saving those. Flooring, demo the existing floors, there are some inconsistencies with the floors right now. And we believe that they're being driven by where those additions were. So over a hundred years, over fifty years, it has shifted a little bit. We had a three D camera that went through the entire building, and we are seeing some discrepancies. The floor leveling is subject to people themselves, right? I mean, we can all walk in a shop and we got trench trains that walking across, and that's a substantial pitch. But when we're looking at leveling, it's often due to inconsistencies with the building. I mean, if you have a whole floor, if this whole room was slightly unlevel, I don't know that anyone would ever really know. But if half, if we had a crown in the middle, we would all know as we walk across. We've got painting finishing, we've got cabinets, so we've got a lot of desks, we have a large area where those receptions are, we looked at trying to reuse case work and trying to incorporate it. It was very, very challenging, and everything that is there just is not making, it's just not a good fit for the use that we have. Aluminum storefronts and windows, this is strictly those windows that we've got. Front entry canopies, so we do have a new canopy where you can see New London Library to create a different image on the exterior. We've got fire protection, so fire protection is going to be on the basement floor and the second floor. So with the change of use from, I think we're at A three or something like that to, and I'm not the architect, to either, I think we're an institute or an educational, you have to have sprinklers on any floor except for your main egress out to ground. So even though, you know, first floor, we can get away with not needing it, second floor, basement, or if there was any additional stories, we would need a sprinkler system. Plumbing, there are some changes that are needed within those rooms for ADA compliance. When we start moving those fixtures, it's going to cause some of the undergrounds to have to get worked around. HVAC. So with the current. So all the units are about somewhere around ten years old. So the goal is to reuse all the units that we have and try to get the extended life out of everything that's there. HVAC units that are ten years old are not, I mean, people say twenty years. I've been in municipal buildings where I'm amazed on how long furnaces are going. So the goal would be to try to reuse all of that. The tricky part is getting, because we're having a change of use, that change of use is not necessarily just for architectural or just for ADA, it's for all divisions of work within your building. So now when we do the change of use, we're looking at different air exchanges, we're looking at different return rates, we're looking at all these different codes that I'll apply to an E or institute occupancy. So when we go to an educational or an institutional occupancy, we're likely increasing the increasing the parameters, because if it's just an office building, we got one person in office, you know, if we divide this room up, we'd have ten offices. Well, if this is a classroom, there could be fifty or a hundred people in here. So there are different things, until we dive deep enough into there, like I said, the goal is to reuse everything. I think the backup plan would be maybe adding one unit in one area in order to accommodate some of those needs, because we have chases that we're reusing within the building. So we've got, you know, the second floor, easy, but we have these large chases that we're keeping all of that there to try to save on cost. Does that make sense? Okay. I had many of the same questions you do, as. I had many of the same questions you do as we're going through here. Why can't we just use everything? And I got a long explanation from the HVC. So now with the electrical. I had an extensive conversation. So half million dollars is a lot of money. Why do we need that much money? We are looking at upgrading everything within there. All the panels, all the switch gears, everything. And the reason being is that originally we were talking about trying to reuse the switch gear. We're talking about reusing the panels and try to get the extended life. Once, I think Northland was very helpful in doing some preliminary design and trying to figure out how we're going to make this work. Once we started looking at it, in order to re, in order to extend the life of these panels and get the right parts that we need for these panels and get the, you know, parts if we need for the switch gear, we're going to have to buy things essentially on eBay because we can't find them from, you know, Warner Electric or anyone like that. So now we're buying parts that are not made for these panels, which then is going to trigger all the warranties being voided on all this other stuff because everything's going to be interconnected. The switch gear, once you start buying things from eBay, it it just becomes this. I guess if I were in your shoes, my biggest concern would be the warranties on everything else that all this stuff is connected to. So we're trying to do our best to save and it's turning out to be very tricky. You know, we've got demoing light fixtures. The unknown. So until we get those walls open, you know, you or I don't exactly know what's in those walls. How old that wiring is, when's the last time it's gotten updated? The building has quite a few years on it. So it is tricky to know exactly what's in those walls. At this point, I try to be a little more conservative in bracing for the what ifs. It's a lot easier when a budget goes down over time rather than up. So, you know, we we could be looking at some serious rewiring within even those exterior walls. We'd be looking at all new outlets, all new data, all new power. Looking at, you know, if we need to do an additional HVC unit or have additional loads that could be incorporated. We've got fire alarms, all the other things that are going to be triggered by your updated building code. So you got your fire alarm, your sprinkler, flow tapper switches, things like that. So then we've got contingency. So right now I have a quarter million dollars in contingency. I think as we move closer, that number is going to slowly shrink. The tricky thing about that is it may shrink and we may have to relocate some of that money to other divisions if we find surprises. Like with, you know, with some of these things, we're narrowing our focus, which is helping to provide some clarity on some of these bigger numbers. We've got architectural documents, we've got construction management. So that's the oversight and the administrative construction oversight, general conditions. Those are all your cost construction, your dumpsters, your toilets, your permits, all that kind of stuff. Bonding, which is required for state projects or municipal projects. Builders risk insurance. And then we go to the last page. These are allowances. I mean, to some degree, everything before here is an allowance and I'll come back to that. But these are definitely allowances right now because we don't know exactly what we're looking at, but these are placeholders for, you know, based on what other libraries have paid. So we've got, you know, equipment for the STEM room, we've got appliances for the kitchen, we've got security allowance. We have communication servers. We're going to need some window coverings. We've got a furniture allowance. We're going to have to have furniture within this building. That's a big number. So right now we're at three point seven to three point eight. Obviously, looking at cost savings, that's always something important. Fiber, fiber is included within the cost. So the system itself will pay for the fiber. So again, it's not included in the three point seven to three point eight, but I wanted to point that out. Communication, so we're looking at routers, access points, things like that. Again, the library system themselves will help pay for these costs. And then a question that I had, and I felt it was worth including on here, you know, we're looking at cost savings. Well, Devon, why don't we just keep the stairs on both ends and just update those? Well, there's some with a cost. So what's that trade off cost? So, you know, the new stairs, we're looking at about a hundred and forty thousand, which again, that's included in that three point seven to three point. If we were just to upgrade the stairs themselves and not do the new stairwell, it would be looking at about sixty thousand. So there are some cost savings. The issue is with the use of that building, the architect, myself, everyone is struggling immensely with not having a direct access from the first and second floor. We have such a disconnect in between those floors right now because the stair walls are so far away from any sort of activity. So no one shouted, I guess. And the other thing that I wanted to reiterate is these are budgets at this point. It is our estimators' best guess in looking into his crystal ball and telling us what's behind these walls and what the footing size is. As we get further along, these numbers will get refined. Again, I like to try to be conservative. So in a perfect world, these numbers slowly get smaller. But as we get further along, there may be surprises along the way. And again, that's the surprise is why we have a quarter million dollar contingency. But I I really want to stress that these are just, these are budgets of us trying to put the puzzle pieces together without having a full set of construction documents. I know councils love long meetings and presentations, so sorry to disappoint.
Any further discussion or questions? All right. Well, thank you for a nice presentation and extra credit for an awesome shirt. Library and museum, Miss Jenny, do you have anything to add?
I feel like with this preliminary budget, that it 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 should answer your questions about whether we need the five hundred thousand. Obviously, we do. We as a committee are very positive about going forward. Again, we have many new leads for fundraising. We've been pushing Keller. We've worked really hard last four or five months to get all of this together. We're getting our documents and new folders together. And so I would say by the end of September, really fundraising will really on a new level began. We have been talking to the Lions Club and different people who are ready of game players, our donors, we've had a donor event to get them up to snuff. But we do have many good leads for more substantial, hopefully substantial donors. And that is our next plan. For us tonight, all that we are asking is if you would consider the five hundred thousand, that we would get that taken care of as one more thing off our, off our list of things to do. And so we're asking, now's the time to ask any questions or if you have discussion between you, that's awesome about this topic. And so.
Thank you, Jenny. Council, any questions for the library museum president?
I do have a question. So we're looking at three point eight.
Yep.
And and thank you for getting these numbers to us so we can better understand and so we can better explain to our constituents. My question, where in this three point eight, where is the library at now for funding?
Right. With your five hundred thousand, we've been telling people that we are at about two point five, two point six million. And that's in real money. I think we have one point two in the bank. Is that right? One point two in the bank. The next one point two, one point three is in pledges, which we just went through all the pledge sheets and those we're gonna be sending out with more information and invoices. Encouraging people. Some people don't want to donate until they actually see a renovation project starting. I think if they see First State starting to dig a hole, that to me will count as starting.
Understand.
So, yeah, so.
Looking at about one point five, yeah.
One point five yet. And so that's, that is our goal.
Thank you.
And we, we actually worked with, we've worked as a committee and we thought we could get this down to three point three to three point five million. But as Devon explained, and we just talked to him about why they did not feel they could cut that HVAC and the electrical, those were the two big areas we really wanted to bring down. You know, the idea of having to, two years later, having to buy parts from eBay and then, you know, it just does not make sense. So, you know, we accept that, that and we'll go from there and do the best, best we can. So.
And to be perfectly honest with that philosophy, it's almost better for us long term instead of trying to do piecemeal stuff. And in eight years, the city council has to upgrade something immensely. So trying to get it through donations is obviously a better scenario.
Agreed.
For long term.
Great. Yeah, we, you know, that would not be good for us to come back in five years and say, oh, we need a hundred thousand dollars to upgrade this one part or three hundred thousand because we didn't do it the first time. So we're, we're, we're going to work really hard to try and raise as much as we can. And we're very excited about getting on with, and because First State's a little delayed in their project, it gives us more time to continue with our fundraising.
Mr. Dorsey.
Did we figure out who's on the hook if they don't raise enough money?
Jenny, would you like to take that?
Was that, is that our city responsibility to finish the building or is it, how does that work? If they don't get there, have we figured that out yet of who's responsible if they don't raise enough money?
Chad, do you have an answer right up front or?
I don't have an answer. I think it's up to the library museum board.
It will be up to us. And you know, as we go through this whole process and Devon is here, you know, there might have to be some decisions. We want to have a commercial kitchen because people have confronted us and said, I make this amazing sauce, you know, salsa or whatever in my home and I can it, but I can't sell it at a fair or something because the state says I have to make it in a commercial kitchen. And Anna's had at least two people ask her about whether we'll have a commercial rated kitchen. So, you know, those are the decisions as we come alongside, you know, if this is something we just can't do. You know, those will be the hard decisions that will have to come back.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but the library museum are a commission and they operate on their own budget. The city gives them a budget to work with and that's no more, no less every year. And that's what they have to work with. So they have to raise their own monies. If they fall short, that's on their budget.
Those are, those are issues we'll have to deal with or I hopefully, what you're giving us will
Right.
will help with that. But hopefully we won't have to come back to you. But I'm just, I'm not, can't say we'd never come back to you again. But hopefully as of right now, we're very optimistic.
Any further questions? Mr. Hess?
Yes, John.
I know at one point, when you first started this discussion with us, I mean, I've only been here a handful, not a whole year yet, but you had asked us that you may need some additional operational money for the museum. And you had some numbers you were floating around and you were going to try to trim. And did you ever come up with more of a better idea what that would be?
For the museum?
Yep.
Well, so help me remember, Chad, but you guys did approve an extra fifty thousand dollar year operating for the museum. And at that point, and that for us, at at least the bills will be covered.
Okay.
You know, in the future, our focus right now is to get this project done. There will be a whole new project with getting the museum upstairs and within the whole building. And that'll be their own committee. I mean, there, there is a committee already started by Christine to begin to start looking at those things, although that'll be a few years down the line.
I mean, it's still part of the puzzle that it just, that question.
Ms. Cross, do you have anything to add to that as far as to answer his question?
No, the the fifty thousand really at this point still stands based on the combination of the resources that the library and museum share right now. And then the museum's, you know, budget as well. So right now, that's.
Here's just a question I had because it was never brought up recently.
Questions are always great.
Thank you. Any, any other questions? Ms. Barrington?
Are you still going out trying to get more donations?
Absolutely. We're excited about some of the prospects that we have. We're just right now trying to get all new folders, all new documents, pictures, I mean, every, we're just, it takes time. And we're pushing Keller as hard as they will go to get us like, I think the last piece of the puzzle, not every donor, but we need to have no renderings, you know, where you look at a picture and you actually see people inside a building or you see children playing in the new interactive play area, you know, those are things not every donor is going to need to see. And those are things that won't come until the end of September or in October. But before that, we are already almost to the point where we have our new folders with all the information that we are going to be approaching people with. So.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question, Mike? I'm sorry. Anything more you want to know? That's as best.
Mr. Roberts?
Go ahead.
But I know we want to get it built. Has there been any talk about operational expense? Are you confident that you can continue with this project under the current budget that you have?
Yeah, so I need that for Ann because she's the one that created her budget for the annex and the library.
Judy and I went extensively or we presented to you exactly how much each person's going to cost. And then obviously gas, the heating, maybe iron. I mean, those things, but the personnel, which is seventy five, eighty percent of our budget is covered.
And so the process is, Mr. Roberts, when we approve a budget for a commission based setting, we approve a bottom line number and how they spend those dollars is entirely up to them. So they can not go over the dollar that is set for them within a budget.
I understand that. I just was wondering if, has there been talks with Keller or whatever, what this building is going to cost in operational expenses compared to the old buildings? Yeah, I'm sure there's, you know, some kind of algorithm or whatever, saying square footage, this, that, another thing for heating electric. You know, not, not just staffing, but.
What we did was look at first aid banks, heating electric. And it fitted our budget. We did hear that it was going to be a different use. So I'm not sure how that would take into account. But for lighting, there's focus on energy. I don't know if those grants exist, but there, there are some other options. That we'll have cheaper lighting, the heating will be better than what we are in the present. Two, so I don't know that I can. But we looked at the budget from the bank and our budget.
So with that said, I think we can move in with Chad to discuss the, the working group that we've, we've had.
So after the last city council meeting with the recommendation, the library museum board went back. And because the, the last city council recommendation was, you know, to fund the five hundred thousand dollars with the annex being considered in there. So we all know where that went. So we went back as a smaller group just to kind of talk about what are some options and what can we do to get this going and figure out where to go. So after some discussion, we came up to a consensus with myself, Mayor Mark, Dave Dorsey was there, Jamie, Bill Fleece, Judy was involved. So we came to a consensus that, you know, number one, and Judy can bring the, the bonding budget back in if you guys want to see that. But it does fit, the five hundred thousand dollars does fit in the bonding budget. So personally, I feel comfortable because those numbers with the five hundred thousand dollars, not anymore, but five hundred thousand dollars because it fits in. And we also talked about the annex property. And one of the, one of the considerations with that is that library museum board wants to try to capture as much money out of that property as it can because there was donated money to that. So they want to capture that money and and put it towards a project to show those donors that we've tried to capture. And your money didn't go to tearing down a building and and for someone else to develop. And we get that. So, but on the city council's end, the council definitely wants to have input on that just because we want a use that's going to be developed there that makes sense. You know, we don't want that, you know, the, the highest bidder is, I keep on going to, I use car sales. We, we don't want to use. I mean, we, we don't want to use car lot there. That doesn't make sense for a downtown district. Um, so the council definitely wants to have some input of what the use is and what the development is going to be there. So, um, we came to an agreement and there was a, um, motion that the library museum board beat that whatever, and the proposal to you guys for, to consider, that we would do an RFP, uh, request for proposals, put it out there for developers, see who's interested, what type of projects, what type of developments would go there, what type of dollar amount they would be willing to purchase that price with. That proposal, those proposals, whatever we get, we'll come back to that smaller working group. And then we would come up to bring the cream of the crop up that both we feel that the library museum board and the city council would, um, approve. We would make a recommendation to both parties, the library museum board and the city council. And both groups would have to agree on that sale of that property. Just because we want to make sure that it's long-term, um, success for the downtown development. And then obviously the library museum board has stakes in, um, the funding. And in that sense, um, then whatever dollar they capture for that sale potentially would go to the library museum project. So again, they could tell their donors that they, you know, took that money and put it in the project. So again, um, I guess it's working groups, um, asking as a recommendation to the, the, uh, the council or the, uh, committee, the whole, to consider the five hundred dollar commitment. Um, and consider doing a joint project with library museum board for the sale of that. Um, and then whatever money is captured for that would go to the project. That's for consideration for you guys to talk about.
Couldn't.
So with, with that said as well, um, that committee has met and discussed a lot of the questions that have been asked. Um, to go in depth. So everybody's kind of understanding and, and on the same page of everything. And Mr. Barrington, you had a?
Wasn't it voted on at a council meeting?
It was voted on at a council meeting and that was also contingent that the museum library accepted it and that was denied. And so that's why it's being brought back. Because we voted for it, so we can, we can bring it back to council.
Another thing that should be considered, um, with that library, um, and museum property is that is in our TID district. So as you know, that is why Chad is saying this is in the fundamental interest, interest of the city to take a look at what's going to be, who, or what it's going to be sold for. Because remember, we will gain incremental value from what's placed there. So we will get revenue, um, from whatever that, um, use of that property ends up being. And again, you would be able to vote on what that would look like.
So with that said, is there any further questions before we move on to Judy's presentation?
I just want to add that being in the other subcommittee meetings, wherever you want to call them, this really is the best deal for both parties to, to sell the property. But allow the council to also have some control over what gets put there because of what Judy just said. It's being in the TID district. We want something with some value. And the, the, the sale price of the property really, it, it should go back to the library. It's not, it's not for us. That, that money was donated by people for the library.
With that said, it's always also my recommendation as well, being part of it.
I just want to say thank you to the committee and everybody who worked on that. Because there was, there were a lot of questions that we had. I feel that this entire council has been in favor of the First State Bank project. And we all just had a lot of concerns and questions and needed to come to an agreement and, and work through some discussions. So I thank the committee for doing that.
Thank you, Ms. Croy.
I'm not sure if it was in your agenda, but, um, at our last meeting, the board did approve to accept this negotiation, um, with a joint, uh, signatures having to be on RFP before it would be accepted.
They got a full report of your meeting minutes.
Okay, great. I just, I haven't read her. So I just wanted to make sure you understood that the board in whole has agreed with us and so.
And, and we're kind of talking about two things here. Um, there's two different line items that will be asked here shortly. Um, without any other questions, we'll move into Judy's presentation on finance. Any other questions? Ms. Radke?
Um, if you want to just grab the project, the bonding, the anticipated bonding for twenty twenty-three, please. Thank you. So this is a, um, schedule that I have been presenting, um, for quite a few months now on our anticipated bonding that we will more likely than not, um, be doing, uh, later twenty twenty-three. Um, and on here, there is actually in twenty twenty-four, um, that library donation of five hundred thousand dollars. It has been on there since the original discussion, um, and is still earmarked within this bonding that will, like I said, will be doing in twenty twenty-three. Um, and it would be my recommendation that that donation come from this bonding.
Is that it?
Yep.
So you had discussed before that, uh, the year twenty twenty-three that we do not have any money, that we do not anticipate any funds coming from that, correct?
Well, what, the timing of the anticipated bonding was late twenty twenty-three, early twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
So the city does not have current funding available until bonding.
Until bonding.
So that's what that was, and I know the Jay at the utility was always here, but he stepped out. Um, they were, we bond in conjunction with the utility and they are on board with all of these projects, all these road projects that we are looking at going into for the next five years. So in order for them to have enough funding, they would need to get their dollars in early twen- or later twenty twenty-three. So it is in our best interest to move that bonding up to twenty twenty-three. Plus, we are looking at going into the downtown a year earlier than we had originally anticipated. So with all these things that have developed, um, over the last, you know, six months or so, um, as with most documents, financial documents, it's a working document and as we know more information, we update those things. So yes, it would be later twenty twenty-three, um, that we would receive that funding. But it would probably be twenty twenty-four before we would release that funding to the library.
And with that said, you're comfortable with the, the contribution to the library?
Yes.
And the library is okay with the money in twenty twenty-four, not twenty twenty-three?
We are.
Yes. Would that also be one lump sum? Are we spreading that out over a year or two or what was the projec- projection for that?
It would be one lump sum.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, hearing no other questions, I would like to entertain a, a motion on the ask of five hundred thousand dollar contribution to the museum in, well, the library project. Um, with our bonding, twenty twenty-three bonding.
Make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Beesaw, seconded by, um, Mr. Fache. Um, any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried, nine, yes, one, no. All right. We can move on to item three, discussion and action on plan to sell the property across from the library and museum. And this is in lieu of what Chad just discussed with the, the working group. I will read the minutes, the portion of the minutes from the library and museum board meeting. And this is kind of what we're looking for, for the motion as well. I'd like to, to mimic what they do moving forward into this. So with that being read, Pearl Street Property, motion by Robert Hart that the board will work with the city to develop a RFP for the sale of the Pearl Street property where both the city and the library museum board must approve the winner of the RFP. With the proceeds of the sale, go to the library project. That motion by them was carried unanimously. Any discussion? All right, with that, we are looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
All right, motion been made by Mr. Dorsey, seconded by Ms. Croy, to mimic the library museum board motion. I'll reread that. So we're understanding that the board will work with the city to develop the RFP for the sale of the Pearl Street property where the, both the city and the library museum board must approve the winner of the RFP. With the proceeds of the sale, go to the library project. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried by all. With that, we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
Take that motion.
Second, Mr. Beesaw made motion, seconded by Mr. Roberts. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carried. We're going to recess for about five minutes, let Judy get prepared. And then we'll be back. And then we'll be back.
President. I'd like to call a personnel. Finance personnel committee meeting to order. Need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So.
Would be made by Mike, second by Bob. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Move on to the insurance presentation. Judy?
So probably about six months ago, I had indicated to the finance committee that WEA Trust would no longer be a health insurance company option for the city of New London moving forward into 2023. So with that, our last consultant, actually Luanne, gave us a call and we talked about moving forward. And in between there, Luanne took a new position. So with us tonight, we have Jamie Gilson. She is our new consultant representative for our health, dental and vision. So city staff has been working diligently with her getting all of the information put together for the presentation tonight. So with that, I will turn it over to Jamie. And she can present to you all the options and things that she has come up with along the way. And then we will make a decision tonight about how we will move forward. So I can insert that or that can be part of my budget process for 2023. So.
Wonderful. Thank you, everyone, for having me. I am Jamie Gilson. With USI, as Judy so kindly mentioned. So I have a presentation put together for you that we'll walk through together. And now it's not working.
On the side, on off to this.
There we go. All right. So as Judy mentioned, WEA is terminating as of December 31st of 2022. So with that, we did a full medical market analysis to make sure that we are doing our due diligence to make sure that we were putting you with the best insurance product available with the best benefits for your employees. We also looked at aligning your benefit effective dates. So right now, your medical, your dental and your vision are all a one-one. We decided to move that up potentially to a 10-1. So those would all be aligned in the future as well. We also discussed putting in a potential population health management strategy, which I'll get into in a second. As well as I wanted to outline some enrollment communication support and education and consumerism tools that we can use for the employees as well. And really trying to impact the rising cost of healthcare by driving consumerism and change among the employees and really educating them on how we can prevent costs moving forward. And to take better care of their health as well. So let's move into the medical portion. Just a quick summary of the market results. Here you can see, we went to Anthem, Blue Cross Blue Shield. That came in at 40.72% above current. Humana came in 27.3% above current. And Network Health Plan didn't even release a number. They just said it was not pretty. So we also went to WCA with their UHC platform and that came in at 20.6% above current. Luckily, we were able to get a very nice competitive offer from Robin Health Partners. They did come in competitive with multiple network options, all coming in below current. So for the majority of my speaking purposes tonight, we're going to be focusing on the broad network, which came in 1.5% below current. This does include all local providers except HSHS and Mayo Clinic. It does include Children's, Freiter, UW Madison and Marshfield. And it also includes Cigna on a national basis. Okay? Yes.
Who is HSH?
That is St. Mary's and St. Vincent in Green Bay. And then it would be St. Nyx in Sheboygan. Okay? So now this is going to be near impossible to see in anyone's eyes. So I believe most of you have it in front of you if you really want to dive into this. But what I'm really going to focus on is looking at the the first column that shows current or plan one. This outlines your current plan with the WEA Trust. And we're going to be comparing it up against plan three, which is the broad network. So as you can see, it's a plan match. So it's a $3,000 deductible for a single, $6,000 for a family. Once that deductible is satisfied, the coinsurance kicks in at 100% up to your out-of-pocket maximum of 3,000 for a single, 6,000 for a family. It is an HSA compatible plan, just like your one currently is. So everything goes out of pocket, goes towards deductible and coinsurance with routine preventative care being covered at 100%. So if you focus on plan three, you can see, look at the rates. Right now, our rates are for an employee 68094. With this plan through Robin, the employee rate would be 67085. For a family rate, right now, we're at 191366. With this new plan, the family rate would be 188531. Also, keep in mind that this would have been pre-renewal rates with your WEA Trust. General medical and RX trend is about 10 to 12%. So this is offering a nice savings below current. Not even factoring in what the potential renewal could have been moving forward. Now, keep in mind, this 1.5% assumes that all enrollments stay the same. So that means that we have right now nine employees on the employee plan and then 32 employees on the family plan. If those employees were to make some election changes, that could, of course, affect the numbers slightly. So I want to be open with that. Any questions on this plan option here before I move forward?
How would changing from family to single? How would that change the overall 1.5%?
It really won't because you're looking at the overall composite rates, but it's just that people would jump on and off or if you'd have more people enrolled that currently aren't enrolled, that could affect affect your overall numbers and your cost compared to current.
But not the percentage of.
Correct. Yep. And then plan one or plan two, here, one was really to offer a plan that was very similar to current with maybe a year or two down the road option where we could offer a more narrowed network to offer some additional cost savings as a dual choice option to the employees. So right now, our focus is in moving into a broad network option. Maybe down the road, looking at offering a potential dual choice option to save some additional potential dollars depending on where the employees are utilizing the providers. Okay? All right. And then alternate number two, I'm really not going to talk much about because that was the second most competitive offer, which when it's coming in at 20% above current, I really don't think that's very competitive. Okay? All right, the next sheet on the slideshow, these numbers are really hard to read on the screen, but what it really outlines is the difference in contributions between the city and the utility. So this breaks down the contribution amounts. Currently, where the city contributes 96% of the premium and then the employees contribute 4%. And on the utility side, their their contribution is 90% from the employer and 10% employee contribution. Okay? So we really don't need to spend much time there. As I mentioned, on the plan that we're looking at, as with your current plan, routine preventative care is covered at 100%. So we really want to remind employees this year to please go in for the routine preventative care. Robin Health Partners does follow the CDC guidelines for what is deemed routine preventative care. And this is something that we'll be covering in in much detail at employee meetings. So just a little bit about Robin. I'm sure many of you have seen Robin commercials on TV or Robin billboards on Highway 41. It really is a collaboration that was formed between Bella, Bellin and Theta Care. So they really originated in our area in 2018, but they're partnered with Health Partners out of Minnesota, who's been in the business for 50-plus year and is a very prominent player over there. So they came together to form this partnership because they really wanted to offer a healthcare program that was more affordable and they really wanted to focus on having the best member experience possible, which we'll talk on in a little bit as well. One thing that they kind of pride themselves on, and it's hard to see on the screen, but if you look right below the Health Partners logo up there underneath the big bird, it says that they're the largest consumer governed nonprofit healthcare company in the nation. So they really have built a commitment to serving the community by combining care delivery and healthcare financing. Okay? Here is a example of what the broad network looks like. We always would encourage all employees to verify that they are utilizing an in-network provider so that website is listed up on top to make sure that employees are being active and making sure their providers are in network. But this includes Bellin, Theta Care, SSM Health, so that would be St. Agnes and Fond du Lac, and then Ripon Medical in Ripon. Also includes Holy Family Memorial in Manitowoc, and it also includes the Ascension Health Providers in Appleton. So St. Elizabeth's in Appleton, and then Mercy Medical in Oshkosh. Okay? Also includes all the Aurora Healthcare Facilities. From from a tertiary care standpoint, under the other category, it includes Neuroscience Group, Children's Hospital of Wisconsin, Freiter, which I know you don't have currently, UW Health, Marshfield Medical Clinic, the Neurospine Center of Wisconsin, Hurt and Vascular Institute, The Orthopedic Surgeons, Inc., OSI, and then OSMS. Okay? And then outside of that area and outside of the state of Wisconsin would fall to the Cigna network nationally. Any questions there? All right, I'm not going to focus much on this focus network because our intention really is to year one form that partnership with Robin, get used to the broad network that's very comparable, if not even a little enhanced from what you have now with potentially year two, looking at offering the dual choice option where we narrow the network a little bit to take advantage of those potential cost savings. Okay? So on this slide, this is does a nice job outlining. If you look at the broad column, it outlines those providers that would be considered out of network. So this would be the HSHAS system, which you had asked about. So that's St. Mary's, St. Vincent, St. Nyx, things like that, as well as Mayo Clinic and Privea Health. So those providers would be considered out of network. Now, we talk about member experience because I know everyone with the WEA Trust had a great experience, I believe, from the member services side. I will tell you that Robin does win awards for their customer service experience. The nice pet about this is that you have multiple ways to access them. You have your member services. And you also have the Nurse Navigator Program as well as Pharmacy Navigators to help with your prescription drugs. They also have Behavioral Health Navigators, and then they have your care line, which is a nurse line 24/7 available to ask any questions about any conditions that you're concerned about. And they also have a baby line. The best part about this is I know that a lot of people sometimes when you call that general service number on the back of your ID card, you kind of get frustrated with the the call center. With Robin, they do such a great job that if you have a nice partnership with the person that you're talking to, you can just ask for their direct number. They will give it to you and you can have that direct dialogue with that same person every time you have a question. So that's one big thing that really does step them apart from the rest of them. Also, all of their call center individuals, for the most part, are located in their Minnesota location or in Green Bay. So you're always getting a local in-house person in the US, which is really nice, too. Okay? So just a little comment to the right, they say that they get they're known for being so advocate oriented and getting that personal name and number really does make a crazy difference for the individuals that use it. There's also some nice additional discounts available through Robin, which we will go through in greater detail with the employees at the time if the decision is made to proceed. So you can get additional discounts on eyewear, exercise equipment, eating well. You can also get gym discounts. One of the gym discounts is for Anytime Fitness, I believe, was the one that came up in the area. So there are discounts available there as well as something called Well Beats where you can get free access to a bunch of free workout videos online. We all know with COVID, some of our workout styles changed substantially. I know I was working out in my closet. So this online resource with free workout videos is really nice for a lot of individuals. And then we talk about a resilient use. So this is where they talk a little bit about their behavioral navigation program. They also do have a digital program with tools and activities to help with depression, sleep disorder, stress and things like that that we'll get more information on at a later time as well. So moving forward, one of the things that I am most passionate about and will continue to stress with everyone is population health management and really honing in on wellness and making sure that individuals are visiting their primary care physician to get that annual physical to make sure that you have a baseline moving forward. Just having that visit really can reduce the number of unknown health risks and reduce the likelihood of having a catastrophic event down the road. So this is our number one biggest way that we can improve our healthcare costs and to try to keep those costs down moving forward is trying to go in, catch things early and be as routine and preventative as we can. So at USI, we really stress our core health strategy. And the reason that we do this is because there's a shocking statistic that 70% of the US population does not have an active relationship with a primary care physician. So we can even probably look around the room and we can all maybe think, I might not have a primary care physician. I feel good. Why do I need to go in? But it really is important to form that relationship and to have those baseline numbers just to have us navigate our total overall health together. Just alone, by doing that, they say this is the biggest return on investment you can make for your healthcare program. There's an estimated cost avoidance of 3 to 5% of premiums long-term. And if we look at the next slide, you can see that inpatient admissions, ER visits, average length of hospital stay and readmission rates. When you compare the blue line of those that go in to see their PCP every year versus those that don't, there's a significant difference by those that go in for the routine preventative care and have that relationship established with their PCP. Okay? So this is a very low-cost way to really make a high impact on your healthcare costs moving forward. And this really says a lot. This is looking at cancer. So this is just showing cancer and the cost associated with it being diagnosed after 12 months of diagnosis, comparing it to 24 months after diagnosis and the survival rate associated with it. So if we go in and catch things early at stage one, you look at the results from a cost standpoint and a survival rate compared to year four. 100% versus 22% chance of survival, that's huge. Not only that, but if we look at the cost associated with it, that's also significant to the overall plan as well. Okay? So as we move into open enrollment, we have a bunch of things that we can do to help support the way that the employees understand their benefits. We pretty much have everything you can imagine from benefit guides, flyers, videos, you name it. An employee that understands their benefits is two times as loyal as an employee. Also better utilize their benefits. So it's really important that we are making sure that the employees are aware of the benefits that are made available to them, especially if we are going to be making a carrier change this year. We also do have additional resources that we will be rolling out as of 10-1. So we have a a mobile app that will be available to the employees that will house all of their benefit information. So this can contain pictures of the ID cards as well as all of the benefit summaries. It can have educational videos on here. It can even have our open enrollment presentation housed right in their hand. So we all know a lot of individuals may not have computers at home, but we all know we don't even leave, we never leave home without our phone. Okay, so this is a really nice resource, especially for spouses. So they have this information in hand at all times as well. And then we also have the Benefit Resource Center, which is a really nice concierge service that is staffed by all USI employees. So if your employees have questions, escalated claims issues, don't know, you know, if they should be on the plan, what the plans mean, they can always reach out to us as a resource, but this is also another resource that they have available to them Monday through Friday, 8 to 5 PM. They can text them, call them, email them, whatever works best for them. And it's another great resource just to make sure that the employees all understand their benefits. And last but not least, from an employee communication standpoint. Hold that thought.
Maybe do it for you?
There we go. We also have a Medicare. So this is a My Benefit Advisor. So we have any individuals, employees that are approaching that near Medicare age and they really want to do a full evaluation on does Medicare make more sense for me? Is my group insurance plan better for me? I think that can be a very intimidating time for a lot of individuals. So this is a great resource that we have available that they will sit down and walk the employees through their current group plan compared to Medicare options to really make the decision that's best for that employee. So another nice resource that we do have available. Then we move into employee education. So this is where I think we can really make an impact, not only during open enrollment, but sending out good reminders all throughout the year. So with me being newer to your group but not new to the business by any means, this is probably the piece that I'm most passionate about. So throughout the year, we can send out reminders. It may be about routine preventative care. It may be on things such as diabetes prevention, cancer prevention, eating healthier, things like that. It's continual reminders and communication pieces that we can push out from an education standpoint that I think could be very beneficial long-term. It also focuses on the behavioral health side. So we talk about resilience. And then we also talk about things on the financial planning side. So we may talk about retirement planning and things like that. So all these nice additional resources that we have available to your employees that will be using moving forward. Now, I'm not going to go through all of these, but we also have a whole learning management system. So these are all of our Flint videos. I included a couple in here on important topics. They're short, two to three-minute videos. They're housed with a URL link that you can supply to your employees. This is something that we could even house on the mobile app that are available in English as well as Spanish. That could be a real nice resource as well. So we have ones on preventative care, how to stretch your healthcare dollars further, ways to optimize your HSA and things like that. So with that, I think that pretty much wraps up my portion of the presentation. Any questions for me?
Think you did a fabulous job on the presentation.
Thank you.
I don't know if there's, are you going to look at the dental, Delta Dental?
Yes.
So if there's no questions on the health insurance side, and like Jamie had indicated, we are looking to go with the Robin Broad Plan Network. I guess it's called Robin Broad Network.
Correct.
Um, starting in 2023, and we are literally looking at a motion of that tonight, which Dave will get to once we get through the Delta Dental and Vision, because we do already are moving forward, trying to, we need to get that educational piece that Jamie is talking about moving forward for the employees, because you have to remember, the two employees do sometimes have to take a look at either spouse's insurance and make choices about whether they're going to go with the city plan or their spouse's plan. So we really need to get that educational piece moving forward. The other really nice part about this is that we can bring in Robin in October, and it helps with our budget process. So we'll know solidly what those numbers are going to be. The other part of this is that I believe Robin is going to bring a great customer service piece. We are used to that with wea trust. I want to reiterate that, what that Jamie talked about. I think it aligns very well with what our employees currently have, has, have, I should say. And it also gives us an opportunity to get to know Robin, and also gives us some options moving into the future. So we have a real short window here this year. We didn't know wea trust was not going to be in the, a player in the game, starting in 2023. So Jamie has been working, you know, 24/7, getting us moving forward within this process. And I thank her for that. But it is a great option for us, for the city, for this year, giving us, just like we look at capital projects or anything else, giving us some kind of choices going into our future for health insurance options in 20, you know, beyond 2023. It also is a great employee retention piece. I'm just going to bring that up. When people are looking at choosing where they're going to work, I think one of the things that we have is a nice health insurance package, as you know, after the presentation. So I just wanted to talk about that a little bit. And now, Jamie, I'll let you talk about Delta Dental and Vision.
Perfect. Okay. So we have on the screen, and I'm not sure how to scroll down so we can see it a little bit further.
Nicole will have to do that.
Okay. So Delta Dental came in with the renewal. As I mentioned, your renewal date prior had been January 1st, but given that we will be moving the medical to a 10-1, we thought it would make most sense from an employee understanding standpoint, as well as from an administrative standpoint, that we also align that date. So I did work with underwriting to get that renewal date changed to a 10-1. Our renewal increase came in with a very small amount at 2%, and that was because the group overall is running a little hot from a utilization standpoint. I will tell you, with COVID and a lot of individuals not going in for the routine preventative care, and then having a hard time getting a dentist's appointment scheduled, because everyone was trying to get their appointments scheduled, those conditions that were going on within our mouth got even worse and turned into more serious costly conditions, hence why we're seeing dental increases. So I will say a 2% is not a big increase. I'd say a 19% increase is more probably what we're seeing other places, given utilization. So 2% is good. And if you look at the bump up in the rates, you'll see it's a very minimal cost increase on the actual tiers. And then Vision, if you scroll down, I believe it's.
The next one.
There you go. Vision is coming in with a 0% rate increase. So no change there, but also moving to a 10-1 effective date. It does show January 1, and the reason it shows January 1 is because we're currently under a rate hold time period. So that's when the plan originated. So that will go through 10-1 of, I believe it was 24 or something down the road.
Yeah.
So with that, during open enrollment meetings, our intention would be that we kind of bring everything together, in addition to those employee education pieces, to really try to make a positive impact in the employees from an education standpoint, as well as a utilization standpoint, moving forward. Any other questions?
Moving to a motion.
Do I make the motion or ask for it?
You ask for it.
Can I get a motion? To approve Robin Broad Network with the same HSA employee's contribution as 2022, Delta Dental and Vision coverage for 50/50 employee split.
So moved.
So, okay. Motion made by Belinda, seconded by Dennis. All those in favor?
Hi.
Post. Motion carried. We need to move into closed session.
All right, Jamie. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
So much for all your time.
Thank you very much. It was a great presentation and answered a lot of questions.
I hope mine goes that well in a couple of words.
Did you have a motion for the closed session?
Not yet.
Okay.
Need a motion moving to closed session for the following statutory exemptions, 19-85, semicolon, one, semicolon, C. Considering employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee or which governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, this will be including Chad Horst, the city administrator, Judy Radke, the finance director, and then Paul Lemke, the city clerk.
So.
Which was made by Dennis and seconded by Belinda. All those in favor?
Hi.
Post. Carry.
Give me a second.